Good morning and welcome to Commissioners Court, January twenty ninth. We have a full quorum, carry sort of five minutes will probably be posted. If you'll please rise for prayer and pledges.
Father, we ask you that you guard these gentlemen and guide these gentlemen in the direction that you would have them go. Thank you for the residence of Walker County. Father, we thank you for each person here. Father, we also want to view the verse of the day found in Matthew chapter seven, verses one and two. Jesus is coming to judge not that ye be not judged. For with what judgment ye judge, ye shall be judged. And with what measure ye meet, it shall be measured to you again. Father, we have, keeping our hearts in order, there's a consequence to our action. Father, may you guard these gentlemen, and the Lord has asked that ye will lead these gentlemen in the direction that ye have them go. Jesus came and prayed, amen.
I'm glad that you're leading us through the plan. In the United States of America, through the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, and in this world, liberty and peace. I'm with Texas plan, but I believe so, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
I didn't receive any citizens input, anybody got anything? Consent agenda contains fifteen items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Two seconds, two seconds.
Moving seconded all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number sixteen, discuss and approve applying for fiscal year twenty twenty four state homeland security grant program. Beaning, okay.
Chief Blackton couldn't make it, they haven't come in and talk to y'all about this. Um, this is going to be a grant that we're requesting to upgrade our radio systems.
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Emergency medical services, number seventeen, received EMS twenty twenty three quarter for update. Rachel.
Oh, Rachel.
Let her pull it up real quick. Um, so just with putting together our quarter report, which for us is October first through December thirty first. Uh, we have run on a regular calendar year, so.
Nothing. Nothing. Nothing.
It's spinning. It's thinking.
That don't top your head anyway, don't you, Rachel?
I mean, I can always pull it up. Come back to it if we need to.
Okay.
Oh, there it goes. They have six. I may have some pop up, yeah.
So it's not here?
It's something like PowerPoint's up, but it's trying to load it. Oh. So it's not yours, it's trying to look program, that program is like, is. Oh, opening.
All right.
Yeah, technology is such a good thing, you know?
We do, you want to talk to eighteen?
Yeah.
We're gonna go to eighteen, discuss and take action on approving price increases related to the two Frazier ambulances on order to be funded by American Rescue Plan.
So we ordered two ambulances in twenty twenty two, summer of twenty twenty two. Um, we have been numbers for them. Uh, they're getting ready to go to Frazier to get the module built. Um, and then we got this letter from Frazier via Ford, um, that they're raising the prices of those two chassis due to um, pandemic issues, delays in processing orders, plant constraints, supply chain disruptions, part availability issues, worker shortages, et cetera. Um, so they're wanting to, or I guess they're telling us they are going to increase the total for those two chassis, um, over twenty five thousand dollars. And then there's a slight increase to the Frazier modules as well. Um, we did go and check with HGAC purchasing helped me with that, and I guess they did support this price increase. So.
How much money total is it?
Total looks like five hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
What's the difference?
Yeah, the, the, uh, actual increase.
Price increase.
That's a, is that twenty five thousand?
Um, the original price was at four eighty six, six thirty four, so. That was thirty thousand dollars.
Or eighty six?
Yeah, there's twenty five thousand oh thirty on the chassis.
Yeah, thirty thousand.
So thirty thousand dollars, basically. Where'd that come from, Patricia?
Um, in the budget amendments today, there, uh, is an amendment in the ARP. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm, I think that we can transfer money within the ARP funds and.
It'll still be okay?
Uh, at least the bulk of it.
All right, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Moving seconded all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Did they give you a, a wish date?
Um, so for these two, um, I guess because Frazier got so backed up and everything else being so backed up, we're looking at probably the end of the year before products are ready. Um, and then we do have the one that was approved this budget year, it is ordered, have to re-triple verify with Frazier, but I believe we already have a bin number assigned for that one. Hopefully it won't be too much longer, but I mean, we're at least a year out, if not longer, before we see any of these.
Yes, all right, we'll go back to seventeen.
Okay, here it is, fourth quarter update. Um, so this is just October first through December thirty first. Um, we had nine one one unit responses, we had a little over twelve hundred calls with twenty four hundred patient contacts total, so that's calls that might have more than one patient on them, like MVCs, things like that. Um, we transported fifty four, fifty six percent of our patients. Um, non-transport for twenty one percent, other thirteen percent, and we had a hundred and seventy eight refusals. Um, that's either patients calling and then they don't want to go with us, somebody calling on their behalf, they don't want to go with us. ORX, things like that where they don't want to go. Um, those are our contacts by month, so October was our busiest month with eight hundred and thirty seven patient contacts. Um, level zero, this is just kind of a rough estimate. Month by month, we're hitting it at least ten times. Um, that's just what our district chiefs are able to keep up with, we're working on fine tuning that data for length of time, um, but essentially a third of the month we're at level zero. Um, and I would say it's safe to say that one, you know, twenty four to forty eight hours out of the month, we are level zero, which equates to two whole days out of the month where we don't have ambulance coverage. Um, peak call time is ten AM to six PM, and that's across the whole county. Um, and this is how often we're mutualizing other agencies usually in H D, out of Montgomery County or Ventura over in city of Trinity. Um, so three or four times a month is, that's kind of what we're doing here.
How many come to us?
Um, MCHD comes to us probably ninety five percent of the time, the only time they don't is when they reach that level zero and they can't provide for us. Um, Ventura is about probably thirty to forty percent of the time they will, but they only have one truck in Trinity. So if they're out on call, we're not going to get mutually aid from them. Um, Saint Joe's, I think we asked for mutual aid from them once in this time period and they weren't able to provide it, so.
In that quarter, I mean, are they coming in five times a month, ten times? Come in on mutual aid assist.
What, MCHD? Or anybody? Um, probably most of the time that we ask, we get somebody to help us, I would have to go back there.
Yeah, but like we, we invited mutual aid four times, three times and three times. Right, not four times in October. How many times in October did somebody come into Lock County?
I would have to go pull it. Usually when we're hitting that level zero, either we call for them and they get disregarded as soon as somebody clears up or they're able to run the call for us. I would say it's probably about the same. Um, shoot time, so this is down from, um, the previous quarter, ending the previous quarter, we were at fifty six seconds, we're at fifty three seconds now, so that's from the time we get a call down at the station, we're right at a minute, um, our average response time from leaving the station to getting on scene is ten minutes and fifty two seconds. Um, and forty one percent of the time we're making scenes less than eight minutes. Uh, we're spending about sixteen and a half minutes on scene and then our average turnaround time from the time we get the call until we're back in service is fifty two minutes. So right at an hour it takes per call that we do. Um, these are our primary impressions or chief complaints that we're going out on, um, no injury, no complaint being the bulk of it. Um, and that's just because of the amount of ORX and things like that that we do. Uh, followed by chest pain, some type of injury, generalized weakness and abdominal pain, those are the same as the previous quarter, just in a different order. Um, our transport destination, I believe last quarter we were at ninety two percent, we're going to HMH, so we're starting to kind of take, uh, more patients out of county to Conroe, um, Methodist, St. Luke's, Herman and Texas Children's. Um, we're also transporting to Petzey and Conroe more frequently. I think the previous quarter, we only had one or two, we're up to four. Um, so we're taking our psychiatric patients where they need to be in Conroe. And then air medical, we flew two with Herman and one with PHI this past quarter. Um, so that's really good for us, that means we're keeping more of our patients, um, and managing them ourselves instead of flying them, so. Um, this is just some of the education that we completed in those three months. Um, for our quarterly training, we did OB, LND, pediatrics, airway and ventilator training, and then in December, we did a EVOC course for our whole department um, out at the rodeo arena at St. Houston State. Um, so everybody, except for like five people in our department have taken the emergency vehicle operators course and then ATV training. We held PHTLS, CPR, ACLS and EPC hard classes for our employees and, uh, had a few outside visitors attend those as well. And then in December, we accepted two of our internal employees to go to paramedic school. Um, they just started January sixth was I think their, their last day to accept, so we have two girls going through the paramedic program, they'll be done in about a year, year and a half. Um, PR events there on the square, um, worked really great with us having our ATV out there and utilizing them tents and a mobile command unit from Settrak. We had six patient contacts out there, um, everything went smoothly with law enforcement PD, um, the whole, the whole event went really well. Um, football, we worked through that this fall, um, SHSU Huntsville, New Waverly, all the tailgating events as well as graduations and then, uh, persons parade, so we've been pretty busy with our PR team. And then this is just kind of like a rough numbers estimate, I can come back, uh, in a couple of weeks with like our final data, but, um, calls for service were eight thousand nine hundred and fifty five and the total like reports that we wrote were just over nine thousand, so. Um, that's for the whole year of twenty twenty three. Um, and then we just have kind of broken down by our trucks, what our total call volumes were for each unit. Thirty three oh five and thirty three oh seven are generally special event trucks, football games there on the square, things like that, so they're they're only staff when we need them. Um, but yeah, our central district truck O two here at fire station two is our busiest truck, so.
Rachel, you're two ladies that are, that are going to the paramedic school. They there, are they signing an apprenticeship? I don't remember.
Yeah, so they, they signed a contract with us, so we'll pay a certain amount, um, each semester for them. Um, multiple forms their books, all of any additional costs, and then as soon as they become certified as a paramedic, they have to stay here for two years with us.
Yeah, Rachel, we, we still answer calls to the units.
Oh, yeah.
So you take quite a few calls from them.
Can you put a column on that next time with just TDC?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
And if you can get us that report next time, so we can read it over the weekend, so we're not, I'm trying to add numbers and totals and, yeah. Thank you.
You're gonna hang around for an agenda item later?
Okay. Yeah, we'll go to number nineteen, discuss and take action on accepting donations for office of emergency management to be deposited in one oh five project funds.
That shouldn't be a problem. I'll make a move to accept it.
Moving seconded all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Order here, number twenty, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty four dash twenty six, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is our end of fiscal year cleanup. Uh, proposing three thousand and forty five dollars be transferred to, uh, constable precinct four for vehicle repairs. Uh, seventy two hundred, uh, transferred, uh, to, uh, from the two seventy eight, excuse me, from the twelve to the two seventy eight to cover legal fees. Uh, sheriff department and internal transfer, constables, uh, the money coming from contingency and, uh, a transfer within the department. Uh, recording grant revenue, uh, in Roden Bridge General are actually reducing, uh, the budget for grant revenue that we did not receive that year. Uh, and then setting up with other specialty funds.
I don't have any questions.
Making most of the, I don't know, number twenty.
Second.
Moving seconded all, favor, raise your hand. Motion twenty one, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Probably be transferred to our contingency fund to operations. Um, we need for our public defender contract, we had an increase of forty eight ninety five. Uh, eleven four fifty is the amount that we spent to date on the CDA contract that was presented to court earlier in the year, and we expect probably to have more that will move that one. Uh, expert witnesses, twenty five hundred, insurance to double, fifty thousand and, uh, central services, forty thousand. This is, um, language interpreters for one of the major, uh, cases that's going on, so we'll, we'll need to cover those costs. Um, and then you'll see those going into the other bonds. In the CDA, uh, recording a grant and the related expenditures, you'll see all the carry forward money for the road and bridges, new road and bridge fund. And then emergency medical fund, the, uh, we receive money for an insurance free table, so getting the money coming in and going to, uh, operations. And then out of our contingency fund, uh, insurance increase sixty seven twenty nine, vehicle repairs, twenty five hundred. Uh, equipment service agreement, twelve thousand, um, and then some for, I think that's how the sixty nine, sixty seven twenty nine in there. But that contingency is the contingency within the EMS fund. And then, uh, twenty thousand coming from the sheriff department fund, uh, uh, fund balance to, that's being spent this year. Projects fund, um, showing fifty five thousand six seventy three coming out of the project contingency. Uh, the licensed plate trailer for the SO, four hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, forty nine hundred on, uh, vehicles, uh. I think it was, uh, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was part of equipping the inside of the vehicle. Uh, the thirty two thousand for the Dodge SUD. EO, OEM truck uplift presented to. And then the DIR, I mean, uh, it was one of our ninety three seventy, this was presented to court, uh, quite a while back, it's part of, uh, one of the, the DIR, uh, payments that was made. And then you'll see the money going into the various line items.
Okay. Like the motion to approve.
Uh, one more, yes. We had one project that was completed, the electronic citation, we had ten thousand one of those in that account. And then, uh, recommending moving them into the public safety equipment, which leaves a balance of sixty five thousand, and that's where we'll come up with the difference on the ambulance. Since we'll transfer those, uh, to the ambulances, that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar allocation.
Patricia, while you're talking about the ARP, have, what did we ever do with the hospital? Have, have, have they turned in any of that stuff yet?
Okay, uh, and that is something, I'll be presenting a, a, a report pretty soon, but on Tri County, uh, we had six hundred and eighty six thousand budgeted based on they have through nine thirty twenty four to spend it. I don't think they'll have that all spent unless the pattern substantial, you know, substantially changes. So on that one, there either needs to be a modification of the contract to allow them to spend it over a longer time or something, uh, whatever's not spent, uh, if court wants to continue to allocate that money. We may, may need to move some of that to projects and move something from projects there. But that one, based on the spending patterns to date, um, either the contract, the budget or where it's paid from needs to be modified. Uh, and probably need to have a meeting with Tri County to see what they're projecting they're going to do.
There you go. So the hospital was where it, I guess I missed it.
No, this is, yeah.
Yeah, he said hospital, but I said you meant Tri County. Okay.
Hospital one, like you said.
Oh, yeah, they spent their, spent their money quite a while ago and they've been reimbursed.
Okay.
I got a motion.
Motion's still there.
I'll second.
Moving seconded all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Patricia.
Twenty two, discuss and take action to approve on in, an informal bid for crack seal for Roden Bridge Precinct. Sheriff?
Morning. So, um, I gave Donna a handout. Um, it was an informal bid, we sent it to three, um, different vendors and we received three. However, Lone Star did not meet specifications, um, according to. Uh, so we have the two deals that we see, uh, from Seal Master uh, for eighteen thousand and then cracked code. Uh, we see we're bidding, and if y'all notice, uh, the delivery is less than, uh, the pickup, and we verified that and basically guess that it is correct. So if we hit it up, it'll be more than if we get them to deliver. So I'm asking that y'all approve this bid, um, so we can get this little code for the machine.
Approve the bid, we're into craft.
I'll second it. Yes, sir.
It did not meet the threshold dollar amount, did not meet the formal bid requirement.
So we didn't bid it for two weeks in the news.
You're correct. We didn't, it was an informal, we selected, uh, area vendors, uh, to send email to. And we've done it that way, expect to spend less than fifty thousand.
I understand, but I thought you meant by that, but it is Roden Bridge materials.
But the procurement is for, um, from, and Brandon, you can help me explain this, uh, it's one machine that does all four, um, precincts.
Precincts, right.
And so Brandon has a machine and it is a one-time procurement.
I assume we're going to give fifty thousand, so.
Fifty thousand, my concern is it's Roden Bridge Materials. And we will spend in excess of fifty thousand dollars on Roden Bridge Materials. That's where I'm having a moment of concern.
Need to bring it back, Clint.
We can, we can resolicit, uh, uh, and post it. Um, I'm not sure we'll get any more bids, but we'll, we'll do that.
I would ask that the court, you could approve this contingent of all completion, I believe review, I'll expedite that and get it done by the end of the week.
That's your motion? That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Attention upon what?
Yeah, I'll second that.
What are you gonna be doing, what are you gonna?
Whether you can do this informally or not.
Okay. I'll provide that to you.
Yeah, I got a motion. Did I get seconded?
Yes.
Motion from Deck or a second from Doggett, then I got another motion. Well, I got another second from Ronnie.
That's okay, we got two seconds, go with the first one.
You still doing that with the amendment? Okay, moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Keep it going, yes. All, all approved. Twenty-three, discuss and take action on solicitation, C two, three, six, zero, dash, twenty-four, dash, zero, zero, one, road material.
So this is a re, we've the first and second bid, um, that we did for road materials. Uh, we received one bid from, uh, Martin Marietta, uh, for the, uh, line items one and two. Uh, and I asked that we produce that bid. There's still four items, so that have not received a bid. Um, talking to the vendors, there, we're not gonna, it's very hard to get, um, the, I guess, rock. Uh, and I guess we'll have to meet that on a as-needed basis. Uh, and solicit when we need it, but they are not providing that.
Do they give you threshold, like if they would make a train car for us, a train, a train package for us and it's?
They did ask me to provide an estimated usage and, and I did respond to them. But they did not say that that would make a matter of them providing it. They just can't get it here. Uh, we can go to the Austin area up in that and probably get it better. Uh, the cost, of course, will be more and it's not that we didn't solicit that, uh, statewide, we did. Nobody up there just went on it.
Ms. Cheryl, this pickup from Martin Marietta, um, where is that picked up at?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, the, uh, the Willis, Willis, Eric, uh, or Conroe, I'll, I'll get that to you.
Probably Conroe, we don't want to go from Conroe down the yard down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got it.
Um, they had five different locations, but it was local, but they, they provided that.
They've got a spur down there that they unload on.
About two blocks from the border.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they got a set of scales and everything down there, if I remember right.
Correct.
So this is better or different than what we have here at Vol.
Yes, this is what we're supposed to debate with. I mean, it's supposed to, the, the, the grade four sack B is supposed to be the clean three inch rock.
Yeah, that's what we used to get along, right?
Yeah, that's what we used to get.
But then for the, for the seventy-five or seventy-three, whatever, um, I, I win this one with the highest number, so.
You're welcome, Bill.
All right.
Danny come out good on this.
Pretty good, I'm looking to phone it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess we do what we do. I got a, like I said, I'm working with the, um, the folks up in, um, Terrell, Corsicana area, lightweight stuff. It's a, you know, it's, it's a different product, um, but I don't see any harm in approving this one.
Yeah.
What it is, it's a sole source product.
Yeah, and, and that's what makes some difference because they're, they're actually, uh, it's a baked clay, it's a lightweight.
Yeah.
You know, and so, um, it's two different products.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a problem.
That lightweight should be on state contract.
Yeah, well, we hadn't got that in use.
Yeah, no, he's not on any sort of a, I've ordered anything. I asked him about that, he sent us advice, so.
But he's sole source anyway, right?
He's a sole source.
So, I mean, so that would.
All right, so, um, anybody make a motion on this? We got it? Not yet? All right, I made the motion to approve agenda item for twenty-three. That's.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on disposal of computers, laptops, printers, and fax machines from C S C D, J L, and S P U.
So the purchasing department has, uh, most, all of these departments have, uh, updated and upgraded their computers and so now I am storing all of their old computers and would like to dispose of it. Uh, either by auction or going to the school districts and, and asking them if they need. And then, uh, selling it to them, uh, as we have in the past, uh, for very little, a dollar, a dollar.
Sounds good. That's my motion.
And get rid of it, I guess it'd come back for auction.
Okay.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I just want to make sure Ken, I T. Double check and, and verify none of the computers would be usable as a spare for Walker County before they're disposed of?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's in the motion.
And, and Cheryl, I'm assuming.
We're gonna donate to schools once Dan has reviewed the products.
But we, and he has, well, I say that, uh, most of them have come through his office to be erased, the hard drives and stuff. Uh, I know that, uh, Princeton, which is C S C D, they are, uh, reserved some for I T D to use areas, so. I know it's made. Did, when, that, that would be transferred.
Sounds good.
And so once, once the school says they take them or not, then we'll go to auction with whatever's left, I'm assuming.
Auction, and if that don't work, I guess trash is next, right?
Right.
Well, I mean, what I'm getting at is that we've got quite a few things that need to be auctioned off.
You're right.
County word.
Uh, we will have an auction to include everything, equipment, cars, um, at, at a later date. And we are, uh, getting ready to compile all of that information, taking pictures of, of what is needed to post on, uh, the auction site. Uh, to have, yes. So what would be left over, we would post it on the auction. And if we have no, uh, bikes or sellers or buyers, uh, then yes, sir.
We got a couple of good trucks we need to get on auction.
I, I got you.
Well, let's watch that.
Yeah, they're really.
Well, it's a short county, county word.
I have a couple. Yeah, I got this motion. I'll second the motion. Yeah. Uh, moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twenty-five, discuss and take action on the placement of ambulance and crew in Riverside.
Good morning.
Y'all recall, they were here a couple of meetings ago and we asked them to go get some more information. So, um, I know they've worked together and come up with some steps, so I'm going to turn it over to Rachel and Lisa.
Sure, hi, it's a matter of fact. Um, as you know, from our last presentation, um, we submitted our short-term goals for, um, E S D one, which include getting a fire duty crew up and going as soon as possible. That will be located at the Riverside One Station, right next to the Riverside City Hall. And we are working actively on, um, the plan for what that structure will look like, et cetera. And how much it will cost. We're not asking for funding for that. We have to do that out of our own budget. Our second priority is to work with Walker County EMS to get a medical duty crew stationed in Riverside. And we have three possible locations for that. The one I can talk about in open court is we could also put it at the current, uh, Riverside Station One location, which is right next to City Hall where the fire duty crew will be. But there's less than an acre of property there, so it's not our preferable location, um, to build an additional bay for the ambulance and to put two D crews there. It's gonna crowd that property. So we have two other properties that are actively under consideration. We should have that resolved within six weeks or so, which is properties we'll move forward with. Um, one is an outright purchase and the other is a long-term lease. So those are inactive consideration. We would like to be able to, um, build both duty crew structures, the one that we've agreed to supply for Walker County EMS and the fire duty crew at the same time, or at least, you know, get, um, costs, some cost savings by, um, uh, purchasing them at the same time. So we're working for that. I wasn't able to report at the last meeting, um, because it wasn't fixed yet, uh, but it now is that, um, Thomas Lake, um, Volunteer Fire Department and Riverside, uh, Volunteer Fire Department have merged. And so at their meeting this month, they will elect their new officers for combined board. They've been working actively to combine their bylaws and, uh, then they'll be working on tactical, you know, discussions after that. So we're in the process of merging those two departments and they are also giving most of their assets, um, including all real property to the E S D for ownership. So we will hold all of the property, um, and most of the equipment that the two, um, departments, um, own will now be in E S D's, um, domain. Um, so that's also something we're actively working on, uh, right now, getting inventories of all the assets. And there are some assets, for example, things that have a loan on them or things that were purchased using a force service agreement that we may have to leave in the name of the department for, uh, uh, amount of time to resolve those issues. So those are our short-term priorities is to get this merge done, to get our fire duty crews, um, structure up and going. And to get this agreement that we've submitted to you, um, for our relationship with Walker County EMS, so that we can provide housing for duty out there. So, and then I guess our long-term priority is determine, uh, to determine, once we, property decisions are resolved, um, whether and if we will build a long-term structure there that would be both for fire and or. Um, uh, for, on a long-term basis. That's yet to be determined. All of our focus right now is getting duty crews. We're focused on labor, focused on, um, response time and the long-term plan will come later. And so it worked a little bit, um, with, uh, Walker County, a lot actually, over a long time, with Walker County EMS. And you know, the, um, revised agreement, we have submitted that agreement, same agreement that E S D two has with Walker County regarding providing housing and doing a collaborative, um, um, provision for the duty crew to be in Riverside. And so we aren't asking for funding or anything from the court. In order to do that, we have the funds to build what we need to do for that duty crew. All we're asking is the approval of that agreement between us and Walker County, so that they could assign an ambulance and a duty crew and or a squad and a duty crew, um, to Riverside area.
So I'm still working on getting some numbers and I'm happy to bring that back. Um, I didn't submit it up because we're still waiting on some quotes and things like that, uh, finishing up our here-to-do stats. Um, but tentatively, it looks like there's about a three hundred thousand dollar difference between going with the squad option and an ambulance option. Um, if we went with like a squad, which would be a Tahoe outfit in the same way our district chiefs are, maybe with some more medications or hot, uh, ventilator, things like that. Um, our main concern is that it would need to be staffed with two people daily for safety. I don't want to be sending one E M P or one medic out somewhere by themselves where they may not get fire response to. Where they're gonna be on twenty, thirty, forty minutes waiting for a transporting unit. Um, so we would like, even if we go with that option, to bring on six people to staff like we would in ambulance, um, smaller vehicle with more of a limited capability, um. The ambulances that we have ordered, have on order, et cetera, um. It looks like probably the soonest we would be able to move one of our current ambulances that's in our fleet would be sometime after these two ambulances we just spoke of are delivered. It would be that third ambulance that would come in before we would be able to have enough reserve trucks to then add a reserve and make it a frontline truck, if that makes sense. Um, when we get these two units and they'll be replacing two of our reserve trucks that are in just life, they'll be going to surplus. Um, and the trucks that they replaced that are currently our frontline trucks, they would be replaced with brand-new trucks. And then when our third truck comes in, which is this budget year's approved truck, it would replace, um, unit thirty-three oh six, it's out off nineteen. Um, and then the truck they're currently in could potentially go to Riverside, depending on the state of our reserve trucks. Um, we do have a letter of intent on a fourth truck as well, um, just so we could kind of get in line, um, with them. But roughly, uh, three hundred thousand dollar difference versus doing a squad option versus an ambulance. And the biggest difference is obviously the ambulance costs more and then you have to get, you know, the stretcher and loading equipment, stair chair, things like that. There's more than I think it's on it, um, which I'm happy to bring that up there for you guys, so I can get quotes and stuff then, but.
So, right, not to interrupt you, but that, so that's six people in a Tahoe, right?
Correct.
Uh, versus an ambulance and sixty.
And the three hundred is a, three hundred thousand is a, a comfortable budget number to bridge from a Tahoe to an ambulance.
Yes, I would say.
Okay.
Um, if you're only gonna Tahoe with all of the bidding just for the vehicle itself, right at seventy-five thousand dollars versus an ambulance, right now is probably right at three hundred thousand dollars to order it. That doesn't have, that doesn't include the monitor, the division equipment, Lucas, stretcher, stair chair, all of the things that go in it. Um, so.
Does not include that, right, from you?
Does not, no, ma'am.
So that's another eighty thousand.
Yeah, so I have a breakdown. I'm happy to bring that next court session. I was working off of budget year quotes and though to get an accurate quote, which I know the price on all of them have gone up. I've gotten notice from all of our vendors that their pricing is going up, so it's just kind of a rough estimate. Um, so once I kind of get like some more finalized quotes, I'm happy to bring that back. Um, but right now, as it is, y'all asked about the T D C numbers. Um, so just for the Ellis and the Estelle unit, it looks like last year, um, in twenty twenty-three, we did seven hundred and seventy-eight Ellis and Estelle unit calls. Um, so that left six hundred and ten Riverside calls, um. There are about eighty-two Thomas Lake and then hundred and eighty-seven.
Yeah.
So the response times out there are anywhere between twenty and twenty-four minutes to get dispatched to a call, um, average. So that's coming from any one of our states.
Yeah, what, what type of funding do we get from the state for answering the calls?
None.
What I thought.
None, um.
When we pick them up, we bill them.
Yeah, yeah, we bill them, um, and I'm working through that because I, it's another conversation if we get closer to that, um. We're not quite billing them correctly from when a merchant bond was set up, so we're, we're working to get them where they should be. So hopefully we do see a significant increase once.
Okay.
We get all of that ironed out. But no, the state does not give us any kind of special compensation for funding their calls that are nine-one-one like everybody else.
Have you ever asked?
I thought they got, I thought they got paid at Medicare rates.
At one time, I thought that's kind of the way it was. It was set up under the Medicare rates, which it didn't even balance out.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be being paid at the Medicare rates. They need to be paying what everybody else is paying.
We have, the county has a contract with U T M B and they pay forty-five percent, thirty percent of, of the call. But now when you say the state, if you're talking about U, U T M B, we do. Uh, I don't know that we actually just even bill the state.
No, U T M B does do their ambulance service.
Managed care is who our billing goes through when we go to teams. Um, we're right at, I think, maybe a hundred and thirty percent of Medicare, which is not, I mean, it's, they're getting a huge deal for.
Yeah.
As much as they'd use it.
I remember a few years back, they sent out statewide, remember they sent, they sent it out to the whole state and said, this is what we're gonna pay.
And you can negotiate that. And so we're, we're working on talking to their.
Okay.
Their contracts department about that to see what we can kind of get lined out with, because they are as a. Of volume.
Okay, so you're talking into this year, early next year, how does that fit into?
My understanding is the two ambulances that come in first replace the ones that are going out of the fleet. And so the third one is the first option they would have to deploy an ambulance out there, which, uh, Rachel says will be set in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, that would be, hopefully it's before then, I would say probably end of this year or spring of next year.
But even that, my understanding is that it's, that that would give them the option to put an ambulance out there, but it doesn't guarantee it. That, uh, approval by the court of the fourth ambulance that has a letter of intent on it would give them the ability to promise that. And this is where it's a little hard for us to start building, duty crew building, if we might get an ambulance in twenty twenty-five. You know, that's kind of.
But when we get the first, when the first two come in, I mean, the two that we're rolling out, I mean, they're rolling, they're working now. Right, and even, I mean, that's what we did if I'm right, and, and New Waverly the first time, we took an old one and put it down.
Yes, isn't that right, Brandon?
So we have two reserve trucks that are, so if something goes down for maintenance, they get a flat tire, they hit a year, whatever. We have two to pull from. New Waverly has a spare.
Right.
Unit down there that we are able to use, but we, I mean, that's New Waverly's truck, so we try not to, you know, abuse that, um.
And you know, just, just, just for information, that spare truck that's anywhere that E S T two, it's a used unit we bought for. And you know, just, just for information, that spare truck that's anywhere that E S D two, it's a used unit we bought for pennies on the dollar, came out of a E S D up around Dallas and the E S D bought that as a spare. That might be an option that you guys as E S D looking to, and I'm not talking about three hundred thousand. I think we paid forty grand for it. And it's still, it's still in service. So it might be an avenue that the E S D one we're going to look at because there are, yes, there's some unicorns out there, but they are out there. You just got to look for.
That's good to know. Safety is coming up in a few weeks, so I can hear to the ground for that possibility.
All right, Bill, where we need to go? We need to get some commitment to these folks.
I think that's where we're at. Patricia?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking anywhere from a minimum of half a million dollars to three quarters of a million to a million. So we need a written financial plan from EMS for the court to look at and see what you're committing to. I mean, we can't spend money without a budget legally. I mean, we have to have a budget fund. So we need a financial plan and then we would need to do a budget amendment and figure out exactly where the money's coming from this year. We're going to spend any money.
We set aside five hundred thousand this year, but it is one time, it is one time.
And that basically was for people, a career that was about the cost of a career.
It seems like we're the ones that need to spend money this year to get the housing, right? And we're willing to do that. We just need approval of our agreement with Walker County EMS and then we need a good faith.
Right. And I can't, I think that's kind of where I'm at is I know we need details, but we have, we have a number. If it's a million dollars, we have some number that we're going to be below, but we do, I think we need to say out loud that Walker County is committed to providing ambulance service in Riverside at a location once the facilities in place and 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 we can procure and ambulance can be procured and 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 stuff like that.
I would think y'all did that with budget by saying half a million dollars we're committing.
Yeah, but we don't have anything, but we just put it over there and he just says.
Yeah, they they need more than that.
I know, I got it, but if you're just asking to say it out loud, we've already committed half a million dollars.
I think we can have housing up in the ball, though we won't rush it if we won't get a unit till twenty twenty-five.
So we're talking about a Tahoe unit?
I I think.
I'd rather go with ambulance.
Me too. I'd rather go with ambulance.
My, my personal opinion, an ambulance is the way to go. It's giving us a sixth unit for our county, which the county is going to need within the next two years. So whether we put it in Riverside or we put it somewhere else, it gives us the ability to change our districts to where it benefits the county as a whole. And draw, redraw those lines where our call volumes are and where they're placed. We go the, the squad route, we're going to have to work with dispatch and Dr. Kobar to kind of determine what that dispatching looks like. Roll out some kind of new protocols and procedures for operating a unit like that.
I think that squad routes, the duty crew, yeah, we're, that's your commitment is get the duty crew and have them halfway basics and roll with it and we'll do an ambulance.
So the squad idea needs to be up under the E S D.
Yeah.
Right. When you're, your personnel, they need to be medical, uh, E M Ts or whatever. I'm not trying to add, do your job, but they need to be able, because that ambulance is going to be gone until a unit, then what are you going to do? You're going to have your duty crew there that needs to go out and do the first, first initial assessment to be a first responder. And and to to be for the program as successful as it can be.
We already do have a Tahoe with, that is equipped somewhat, not to the degree that we've discussed, because we don't have paramedics running it, you know.
Right, right. But we see those people coming, what like y'all do, when the duty crews come in, the higher skilled people will come.
Right.
Yep, and be that guy. Okay.
So we need a motion for directions?
What, what, what the E S D needs from the court is approval of our agreement, which we've submitted to you last, or a month or so ago. Bring it again, but I will have it. And the only change from the previous time we submitted it was it left some ambiguity as to whether it was a squad or an ambulance. We just, you know.
Right, because that was, that was.
We put squad or ambulance, so it it could be approved as is because we honestly are leaving that to discretion of of the Walker County EMS to determine if they prefer to do an ambulance and they have the budget and the equipment to do that, then we prefer that, obviously. If doing a Tahoe gets it there in September, then start working on housing tomorrow, you know. Of twenty twenty-five is kind of a big range, like is that January, September?
It's a long way out.
But but it also also in the grand scheme of things, we went from five hundred to now we're talking to a million dollars this month, which is two cents.
Yeah, about two cents.
Am I correct that it's about, the labor's about three hundred a year or four? Um, so to bring on three E M Ts, it's two hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three based on this past budget year planning and three medics is two hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Close to six.
So, so that's
That five hundred
This year would be perpetual for the crew.
I mean, we know, we don't have a work.
But her budget is, none of this is budget.
First, that five hundred is, which we won't be using this year, obviously.
Right.
It'll be a while getting there.
The first year, if we we stuck in this year's budget, we don't spend it, it'd be something that can help the first year. I mean, we know. Yeah, we know that this is coming, that we need another ambulance. I mean, your presentation showed only forty percent of the calls are eight minutes or less, but that's the eight-minute mark is kind of the magic mark and we're making that.
Twenty-six percent of the calls are.
So we know that's, that's coming, so. And this is a, I mean, we keep kind of going, and you know what, I have to, I guess I need to apologize for not putting the actual agreement on the agenda today.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was figured it pulled over from previous.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't do that today.
Do you need me to resend it?
No, I have it.
Okay.
I've got it. I just didn't put it on the agenda and we had to stick to the wording pretty tightly on the agenda, so that one's going to be on me. So we're going to end up kicking the can down the road two more weeks, but that's still before y'all meet again, I think, right? Yeah, so we'll come back before. Okay.
See if we can't get that as close to.
All right, so.
Rachel, isn't it accurate to say that, that moving that fourth ambulance from one urban to approved item would be able to say, yes, we will put one in Riverside?
That would, that would get us to where we have pre-reserve units and so then we could that one there. That will, that one that's not, we have a letter of intent for will probably fall at this next budget year planning because I don't anticipate them saying, surprise, here's a truck for you. If they do, well, then I guess I'll be back to us. We can get it, but we're just kind of getting a placeholder because it takes so long to get them.
And and the written financial, it, it needs to be in writing. Needs to include everything, you know, rather than saying an ambulance, include all the equipment it takes to make the ambulance work. And then if you have options and, you know, put the options in writing. So that the court gets the true picture of the effect it's going to have on the tax.
Let's have everything ready for the next, or if not, let's do the, yeah, on the agenda when we have it already.
So it's going to be on the agenda in two weeks.
If you have everything ready.
The agreement, our real estate issue will be resolved for about six weeks and so I can't tell you what we're going to go, will be single wide or double wide or, you know, if it's whatever, until I know how our real estate. But what, do you need that from us or do you just speak from us? We will provide the housing or ambulance or squad.
For me, that's, for me, that's fine.
Have it done by November, September, you know, the end of the year. We're willing to commit that.
And my opinion, we need to have, we need to have our stuff here locked in. I mean, you can't sit across table from somebody saying, hey, we're going to build an ambulance building not knowing that we have an ambulance to go in that building.
Right now, it's like.
So, all right, let's bring you guys back in a couple of weeks and we'll, I'll get, I'll go back to the agreement, take a peek at that and I'll send it to you and Quentin and everybody again in the court to take it and make sure. I I I think we take the, I think we take the squad just out of it, just, just.
Well, I'd rather just go with the whole ambulance.
Don't waste money on half, have something halfway.
Yeah, then you, y'all.
And we got to build it in the budget. Go ahead and point that out.
On this part, we're forgiven.
Okay, gang. We're going to pass on twenty-five.
All right, I appreciate y'all coming in. Thank you.
Twenty-six, discuss and take action on appointment of Chance Gardner to perform the duties of fire marshal for the purpose of evaluating applications for mass gathering for Walker County.
Chance, you back again?
So we worked up a contract where he's an employee of Walker County now. Had a two thousand dollar salary for the year.
Man.
So he making big money. Quentin has reviewed it. Y'all got any questions?
I don't, but I would tell you this, if it gets where that two thousand don't work, come back. That's not much.
We're going to evaluate kind of at the end of this year, figure it out, work budget and. How do we?
No, go ahead. I'm just, I'm not, nothing against Chance, I'm not wholeheartedly behind this. I understand that we need it. Have, have we reviewed all our options? I mean, have we talked to the city at all about this?
We did.
What was?
They're still going to have to do the same kind of thing.
We already have our internal agreements with them.
Or fire.
Commissioner, I would say that this is we don't have any kind of control over.
That would cover this.
But if they were interested, we could write.
Yeah.
We could write one. I got two concerns. One is that, that we haven't that I've seen officially asked the city and got a response back from the city. That's, that's a question. The second one for me is I don't see how we can do a, a two thousand dollar salary. And call a person a part-time employee. That, to me, that's a, that's a contract employer. And then, so are we making my two thousand dollar exempt employee? And at what point does the Minimum Wage Labor Act say, okay, he's worked two thousand hours, he's making a dollar an hour, that's not legal? I don't, that, that part, that's way too gray for me to say.
Well, we got Dr. Wells under exempt some kind of way. How, how do we got that, Patricia?
Um, he, it was a contract. I mean, his salary, of course, was more than two thousand dollars.
Right.
But it went through purchasing. I'm not
Same contract.
But a, a salaried employee is certainly acceptable. They have to meet certain certain professions, professional positions can be salaried. They don't do time sheets. They don't do hourly rates. They're, you know, they're not earning benefits. They are typically in the retirement plan. I think in this case, Amy mentioned that he's already in a retirement plan. So I don't know what they ended up working there, but you can have salaried positions. I know that Amy was talked to. I wasn't part of that conversation. But she knows the regulations, so I'm sure she checked whether or not this was an exempt position. So you don't get into the overtime laws, but I'm, who, I'm not sure who was in that meeting with her.
I don't know. Quentin, you're okay with the contract?
Yeah, I drafted it.
I'm good with it.
For your understanding, with how many hours in a year Chance would be working? I don't know if the judge is aware, if you off top of your head, Judge, how many applications for that?
I got two people talking to us. So I mean, we're not talking.
Not so much hourly work. When an application comes in, he'll go do that one, that, that one investigation. I would expect that, don't know how to do each job, so play in on this, but I would expect that he's probably not going to spend much more than an hour or so. Anytime an application comes in. Expect that we're only going to see.
No, I think it'd be more than that because I did jump. There's a back and forth there.
You have an idea about how long?
I don't.
That's what I'm saying. We just threw a number out there. He has no idea what his time's going to be.
I'm perfectly pumped, taking walks at this to help out for the first year and then we can reevaluate.
And I will say that while I drafted the agreement, I did not come up with that two thousand dollars that was given to me to put in there. So, but nevertheless, the idea is, and I think the agreement lays that out, that he's doing this per application. And so another way to do this, if you want to take it away from salary and set a fee per application investigated, which is something that is another option that makes you feel more comfortable. It could, it could substantially be less than two thousand dollars if you do that, though, because you don't know that you can fee. You know, if you see ten applications in a year, then you're moving a seven hundred fifty.
I can't get Mustang Cat to drive up here for two thousand dollars.
I don't, I'm not, I don't expect Chance to do it for sure and and the money is not really the problem. Did we exempt all our?
That's a, that's a different question than the one Commissioner Doggett is raising at this point. But in terms of, he's basically, he's being moved under as an employee. Designed, selected for liability issues. That's the only reason that he's there. My original contract that I proposed for y'all to consider has made him an independent contractor.
Right.
And then with the liability issues, the only way around that is make him an employee. He's an employee with a very specific, limited scope of employment. If he is functioning under the direct command and control of the county judge.
Which, which makes the, which makes the argument of being an exempt employee kind of scary for me. If you have a direct supervisor, you're not an autonomous employee. If we're paying him two thousand a year with no, no time sheet, he's an exempt employee. Yeah, absolutely. That's the definition of an exempt employee.
I think there's a difference between those two, but nevertheless, that two thousand can be adjusted. You can change it to a fee per application.
I would rather, in my, in my, for what it's worth, I would rather be an hourly. Because like I say, if he goes more, you got to come back. But you say, you know, we'll pay the guy thirty dollars an hour. And then when you do your work, you, you do your hours and they turn him in. Now he's a part-time employee who turns in a time sheet. I worked six hours last week at thirty dollars an hour or whatever it is. Here's my, here's my time sheet. They only have a record. We can track how many, how many hours they're doing it and stuff like that. The two thousand scares me, especially when you say directly under the supervision of, that, that to me is, is scary as far as an exempt. And if he does zero, then it becomes a retainer, which makes him a contract employee. So I'm scared.
If I went hourly, that it would cost you a lot more money because I'd have to charge mileage and come on the commission.
Well, we should pay, we should pay your, your, especially like. Yeah, like Danny says. No, no, you, if you're going to do it, it's an income, it's a job and we should pay you fairly for it.
But we're also looking at adding an employee, you know, even if it is part-time and
Yeah.
I just, yeah, I don't know.
You know, are you going to take it like it is, Chance?
I'm perfectly.
I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Move single on favor, raise your hand.
I'm going to ask for Quentin to, no, I'm not in favor of it. I'm going to ask for, I want to, I want a legal opinion from Quentin on the status of an exempt versus a whatever other employee, salary employee, working directly under somebody else. I think we need to settle that before we.
You have some probably opposed.
So.
No, he did not. I'm not a yes.
He raised it, but he was.
Can we, can we make a motion? If we make the motion, approve pending a legal review and letter and a no objection statement from the attorney. We do that, then it's a yes for me, but I just think we just need to address it because it doesn't, it doesn't smell right.
Quentin's already looked at it.
He wrote it.
He wrote it.
I don't think we looked at it all the way through. You can't say, under the direct supervision of somebody else and call that person salaried or exempt. You can't do that.
How do we do? Ah dang, I hate to kick this up, but how do we do Joe Cornell?
He's a contract. It's just like Mr. Nimitz was.
Yeah.
He's a contract.
So that's.
I thought he was, but I couldn't remember. I knew we paid him so much a month. Um, he's the only other one that I could think of that, that was, you know, along the same lines of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
I may do this way, Bill, but my motion stands like it was.
I've got three, four. I need to vote for against. Oh, vote against.
Yeah.
Motion passed three to two. Yes. You had three, two. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on interior remodeling of senior center for Walker County.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
My ask is a little bit easier. Essentially, we've got two grants available to us that will allow us to do some renovations to the senior center, to the restrooms. Buy a new freezer to store food and redo the laundry area to kind of make it more. If, if the storm, if we get used as a shelter again. if, if the storm, if we get used as a shelter again, we're gonna redo the shower to make it a little bit more accessible for those people. So all we're asking is permission to move forward, get bids, price and put together a plan, so we can bring it back to you and say.
Right, not, not to interrupt you, but can you state your names?
Oh, sorry. Bart Davis, sorry, thank you. So we're just asking permission to move forward, uh, cause it's your building, to get a plan put together, get bids and bring it back to you. That's all.
Okay, and part of this, and I, I asked him to show up and visit, that's one reason why it's here, is the, um, fire alarm system that's in the building, that we're being, we're looking at rebuilding and stuff like that. I wanna be sure that our people visit with Bart and his people as a part of that process.
It would be beneficial when they come to remove the, or relocate or remove the system that were a part of that.
Oh, that's gonna have a lot of effect on, on, on how your designs are, yeah.
It, it will, because one of the areas where we're gonna put the freezer is kinda right in line with where the alarm system is now, so we, we wanna open up that wall possibly. Uh, but we would have to relocate the alarm system, so, yeah, we definitely need to coordinate that.
So we need to get Larry involved to get him on board with y'all to, to look at that, okay?
Okay.
That could come from our court, I hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, um, I don't know that I need a motion, I'm gonna say one, make the motion to approve the senior center to pursue their remodeling investigation and to consult with county staff regarding the placement of the fire, um, alarm system.
I'll second that.
Move single on favor, raise your hand. Yeah, alright, planning development, number twenty eight, discuss and take action on flat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four seven, Belrank subdivision, Jeremiah Lauderdale survey A three two eight Sugar Hill Road.
He figured you're gonna leave anyhow, Wade.
No, Wade's got stuff to sign.
Wade can't go, he's stuck with us.
Ain't nobody clear.
Yeah, Wade's.
I'm gonna talk to this.
Yeah, hell, I couldn't even read it, but Danny.
It's just a picture. Just keep you.
The top part of it.
Oh, it's nice. It just happened.
That's west side of here.
Right now. We're good, go ahead, Andy. I did?
We use exist right away, wide spot, for commissioners will file approved.
Yeah.
Lots again along existing. Right, the variance is already granted for the right of way setback as it's shown.
Yeah, he just took a piece of land and cut it into four pieces, and we chose not to take the wider right away, cause everything around him is woods and no BBS. I'll make the motion to approve it, Jim, that of twenty eight, let's presume.
Move single on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty nine, discuss and take action on Far East Land Limited LLC request for variance to section B four table B four dot one of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding curb and gutter requirements for the proposal Saxon Pines Mobile Home and RV Community Project, George R. Mercer, sir.
Andy, can you kinda tell us exactly where this is located? I know you and I talked about it.
Is it Foresters at Season Pine, Statue of Test in Pine? Foresters Development Company. So, uh, this is Mr. Beaman, project engineer for the project, full application project, perception variances, uh, culinary variances in advance of some.
Let's play out there.
Just to the court.
I can't read.
At Didley.
Yeah.
So.
It's past Didley?
One point two miles northeast Didley Road on seventeen ninety-one.
Yeah, it's farther out. It's right at the edge of the ETJ. In the ETJ or something, partially in, partially out. Right at the very extreme.
Alright, where, tell us where the property is.
It's, it's on seventeen ninety-one.
I know that.
It's just north of, um, Didley Road, um, the, um.
This, yeah.
I, I can.
There's a road that, we, that road that wraps around behind it, you were named it.
Which one?
Recall, the road that comes off wraps around behind it, like here.
Behind that, Didley?
Behind this, so this.
Is that that camp? Is that the camp out there?
Lone Edition?
Well, I mean, before you said it was in, in, uh, between all the, the camp and, and, uh, Bowden.
Of Lee High Tower.
So it'd be between Lee High Tower and Bowden is what I think you told me the other day, Andy, isn't that right?
That's right.
Alright, if that's the case, it's, it's the land that come from the Malones. That backs up to that creek.
Yes, it does, it does back up to, uh, White Oak Creek is in the back of this, of the property.
So Mr. Michael Johnson actually bought it.
Mm-hmm.
If that's, if that's the place, that's only, there's not much land in there, so. There's a little bit land further down.
Actually, can you get the appraisal district to come up on that?
We just Google them out.
Well, appraisal will show the track.
Question done, gotta stop. I'd like to know where it's at, though.
Just like, just like you guys were talking about, uh, when we got started. Got my iPad, it's supposed to be able to give me some match.
Yeah, we can find it up here on the.
What's the property owner's name or, uh?
Far East Land Limited. It's on the north side of seventy.
Probably west side.
Seventeen ninety-one. Kinda flattens, it's on the north side.
What was it, Far?
Far East Land Limited. It's a tax ID number one, three, three, four, two.
That monkey also scream.
Thank you, Wade.
There you are.
And what are we wanting?
Here's Lee High Tower, right.
Okay, so it's basically that, that track of land that we're talking about is the old Malone place. Okay. You know what we're talking about?
Yeah.
I looked it up one night, forget.
I thought that was it. Now, I've been hearing about this for months and months and months, but I hadn't even talked to you guys. You know, I have to hear about it on Thursday, so. It is what it is.
I ain't go back.
Alright.
Alright, we know where it's at.
There's a, there's a series, a series of very ancient places. The first one that the board has before him is Donald requesting to admit curb and gutter, um, per section. Uh, uh, characterizing it. Won't you introduce some of the project before we get to what it is and?
Did you get his name and all?
Oh, no.
My name's Daniel Beaman with Beaman Engineering. And I'm the project engineer for this, uh, for this project. Um, the developer is, is looking to build and develop it with twenty-one mobile homes, uh, in a single cul-de-sac, and also, um, believe it's sixty-seven mobile home, uh, I'm sorry, uh, RV spaces. The, uh, the, the project will will have concrete streets for the RV pad side, proposing, uh, an asphalt, um, an asphalt, uh, street with, uh, with a lay-down curb for the, uh, the mobile home portion. And, um, we're also proposing, uh, individual parking spaces, uh, outside of the, um, the asphalt street or the mobile home section, uh, so there won't be any parking on the actual asphalt, asphalt streets, providing uh, enough parking spaces for, so that there's a one parking space per bedroom for the mobile homes, so you can have people parking on the actual, actual roadway. Uh, all of these will be privately maintained streets. None of these will be dedicated as public right of way. In the RV section of the, of the property, we've, we've laid out a street network that will, where some of the street, one-way streets, uh, help maneuver RVs in and out of the, of the pad. Um, we've got one section that is a two-way section with a, with a cul-de-sac at the end, so that RVs can come in, turn around and also be able to leave. Uh, we've, uh, uh, are asking some of, some of the variances that we are asking for, uh, are regarding roads. I'm really, as well, so proposing one, some one-way streets as opposed to two-way streets. The the, the standard width is not like one-way direction. Um, uh, this property will provide detention, um, it backs up to, uh, floodplains, and we're taking all of the development and making sure that we're outside of the floodplain. We've got three different ways that we've identified where the floodplain is. Uh, one is with the actual FEMA, uh, map. One is with base flood elevation data that FEMA has published, uh, and one way is with, uh, actual field elevation, survey elevations on site. Um, we took the worst-case scenario for all three of those situations and providing other development outside of all of those, all of those, those boundaries. The, uh, as, as Andy said, this is a preliminary, uh, design, preliminary concept. Uh, application is on calculations to make sure that providing appropriate range, so appropriate detention facilities, uh, will be provided, uh, at a later date. And I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you guys, you guys might have.
For the purposes of the agenda, we'll take these one at a time. The first one listed on the agenda is the variance related to curb. Look at your, your review letter. Made serving gutter requirement for seven, seven.
Andy, show us, it's so hard to read this. Where, where are sections two and seven?
So, uh, section one is, is this, uh, this cul-de-sac, uh, and that.
And tell us what's gonna be there.
That's the mobile, that's the mobile homes.
Yes.
It, it, it's much, it's much clearer here that I can show you, and I'll, I'll, I'll show all, all of you guys. But this is section one. Okay, and, and section one corresponds to.
Mobile home.
That's where our mobile homes would go. Section one will correspond to this section, which is a twenty-six foot wide back of curb to back of curb with lay-down curbs um, and asphalt streets. So, the, the idea with the lay-down curb is that you can, uh, you can put parking right in the back of the, the lay-down curb without having an actual curb cut, so a car can just.
Jump curb.
Basically jump the curb, yes, sir.
Name, so, I, I've watched.
Okay, so section one.
Andy, where, where's our policy on this? I mean, I know they're telling us what the variance is, but where's our policy on the road width?
So the, the, under our current policy for RV park or mobile home, the requirement is that it meet the subdivision. You know, entities that they're looking at. So that require our concrete gutter street with, uh, is our, is our policy allow for curbs already actually standard, but we require curb and gutter, concrete streets, edge to edge with, uh, thirty-two foot wide roads. That's what's in our current policy for identity, uh, development. It's just what, which is what they're, they, they would be doing. Um, what they're asking for in this variance is specifically related to the sections where the RVs are gonna be. And to provide the concrete streets, not curbs.
Correct.
And if I understand correctly, it's drainage, overland drainage, not have ditches or, or drainage at the, do inverted streets where you're collecting the, the road, sort of like what you would see in a. Road goes this way and gets collected. They wanna do collection of different method than what we typically see on the standard, um, street.
And similarly, similar to the, um, you know, instead of, and, instead of having lay-down curbs for the RV section, we're proposing just the edge of concrete because it would be easier to maneuver RVs. Without having to jump that lay-down curb, even though lay-down curb is, is minimal.
Somewhere.
Easier to back up an RV over the.
Somewhere on here, we were talking about using the roads as a drainage and sheet draining across the roads and.
There, there are some sections that would, would sheet drain across the road. Um, the topography all drains, um, you know, obviously towards, towards the creek. Um, we would be sheet draining across the roads on, on this side. We'd be collecting it in the middle so that you're not sheet flowing across those, those RV pads. We would collect this, we would pipe it to where it could be mitigated in a detention pond before we would release to the, to the creek. So, yeah, some of the roads would be sheet flow across, some of them would be collecting depending on, um, our, our ultimate.
Stephanie, are you on?
Yes. Yes, sir, I'm here.
Can you respond on, you guys have a recommendation on branch request number three relating to this? And one of the, one of the caveats you have in this related to the sheet flow? Do, um, explain to court what your objection is?
Correct, yes. Those sections five, six, one, seven, uh, for the, for the exhibit indicate that sheet flow would, um, be conveyed across, uh, the street and through the RV parks that are on the opposite, or the RV pads that are on the opposite side of the street. And so that, that goes against the intent of the ordinance where the ordinance, or the, the subdivision regulations, uh, indicate that water should be collected in the streets and conveyed to the asphalt point. So our concern is, is that flow crossing the streets. We don't have an objection to utilizing, um, a valley system or like an inverted crown. Uh, but, but the crossing the street is, is our primary concern, and so we have three, three items on there that we would, uh, recommend if, if the court determines that they would like to approve the variances. We would note that no cross-street, cross-street drainage is permitted. Um, that there'd be a note placed on the plans regarding positive drainage being provided throughout the site, and also recommend that, um, this variance only. And also recommend that um this variance only apply to the RV section.
There was not an objection to the collection in the middle of the street using the inverted. Crown, the objection is the cross street impact that that would have. On those lots that it's falling across.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I have a question. How how fast is this thing moving? This this is like, this is a lot. And that's what I was gonna ask. Is this something we could we could kick down? And you visit with Commissioner White and y'all, maybe all three of y'all, when you come back, because it's his precinct, we're gonna follow. You know, his lead or listen to his stuff, what he's talking about. But um.
Well, you know, I've got some concerns about the parking. You said one 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 parking spot per mobile home?
Per bedroom.
At least, yes, sir.
So what so where in where in logic does that fall? I mean, how big are these mobile homes going to be?
Uh some of them are two bedrooms, some of them are three.
And so you think one vehicle per 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 bedroom or per house? Okay, I misunderstood you then.
But but still.
So in a in a lot that's forty foot wide, where are you gonna put three vehicles?
I've got them shown on that. Maybe you can't see it on your on your. I've 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 got parking spaces.
Okay, along with what this is.
Yes, sir.
So if they don't bark where they're supposed to, how are you gonna enforce it? Because we've got it.
So what are they gonna?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, today I turn them all on.
I think that's your call. I think that's why I brought it up.
I think we need to come back a couple of weeks and you need to visit with us because today you're gonna get a no from me on all four of them. Unless we can visit and maybe meet at the site and look at what you're doing.
We can do that.
That's kind of where I'm gonna be if I vote on it today. I just got this stuff over the week. And it's a lot of information to look at.
It's a lot for us because the the like for me, I'm not familiar with the area at all. And it's a lot going on there, so.
We're gonna pass twenty-nine to thirty-two.
You good with that, Andy? I I mean, we need to see it or. My vote today of being no on all four, I'll just tell you that straight down.
I think y'all worked that out.
With Andy and let's meet and and maybe even meet at the site.
Have y'all three go out there and figure it out and he'll tell you what you need, Brian. All right, we're gonna pass down to thirty. We're on thirty-three now. Discuss and take action on labor. A fee for variance applications related to subdivision, twelve-point-five acre tract belonging to J. Will Higgins the third. And Wilma Jean Higgins in a in the Apex survey eight dash four three zero.
Essentially. Essentially, they have a track. The original, we described this way, Scales Ranch Road uh cuts across by by six track through the building. Um so effectively, they have a portion on this side of Scales Ranch and a portion on that side of Scales Ranch. Uh several years ago, they got an exception for partial financing on on one part of it. Um they are now looking at potentially selling part of the property. So uh what they're asking for later in the court is a variance um. To this to filing a plat since essentially all together um. Basically, as long as they dedicate right of way, that that's here, that their sort of argument is. It was divided by the county's maintenance of the road. Uh they're not seeking further division. They're seeking to be able to handle the two halves created by the existence of the roadway. And so what they're asking uh further down the agenda, this is important to this one. Is that the court waive the requirement to plot and allow meets and bounds sales of what is outside of the right of way? Uh without applying having to be filed.
Yeah, and and I've talked to them. They've agreed to give us. The thirty foot from the center of the road on both sides so we don't have issues down the road.
That area, that sixty-four area has been left out of the. Okay, so uh this item is whether or not the court wishes to waive in order to to. To get rid of the planning requirement they had to apply for a variance, which is next on the on the agenda. This part of the agenda is whether the court wants to waive the two hundred dollar fee for variance application, given the circumstances of the. Of the situation.
This is on the other end.
Yeah. Well, what what's the first one, Andy? We on the way?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I don't like the term.
How much is the fee? I I don't particularly think we need to waive the fee, honestly, but. We can look at doing the rest of it, but I'm not gonna be for waiving the fee. So that's my motion.
To deny the waiver or?
That's the motion. I'll second that. Move, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. So do we need to go to thirty-four? Let's discuss and take action on requests for variance to work county subdivision regulations related to the subdivision of twelve-point-five acre tract belonging to J. Will Higgins the third and Wilma Jean Higgins in the Apex survey.
I think Andy kind of explained what they're doing and I'm not opposed to this because they are giving us the right of way to be able to. And our right of way down the road in case the wrong landowners buy it. That's my motion.
Two contingencies. One is contingent of one right of way being dedicated. And two would be contingent of all the fee being back. So I haven't.
Yes.
I'll second that. Move, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on potential alternatives, the fees and fee waivers for plat applications.
Discuss this a little bit with courts. He reached back. Or flattered me, told me how many the trust and so on and so forth. Come back. I've 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 been over a couple of applications that we have pending. Uh talk to Brandon about this relation to those applications. Essentially, um. If you look at this list, titled additional guidance related to in in our fee schedule, I have the ability to waive. Uh fees for minor changes that are necessary. Given that uh uh submittal that only has minor changes to make the platter plans for application acceptable. Uh to no comment before Commissioners Court.
Yeah.
So the first two items in this list. Updated of original document, the associated documents that accompany the plat, the tax certificate. The maybe text audit approval letter, those kinds of letters coming in after third review. I I I feel like everything can be considered minor. Uh the second is minor changes for spelling or clarity. A note misspelled, the commissioner's name is misspelled, a note is missing a word by accident that needs to be corrected. Certainly, I think those types of things uh fall into the category of minor. And in those two cases. I would use my judgment and say I've got no issue with those. The part that I need a little additional guidance from court on. Is whenever there are changes to the actual platinum plans that are substantive or beyond just correcting a note. Or correcting a mislabel or something like that. So we have um a couple of plats actually that are on the agenda today. Where we have some, we've received plans submittals that have changed the plans. Uh but uh not major changes to the plans. And so um um. One of those is uh um there were some changes that were necessary to some of the topography on the plan. And so. Brendan and I went over on kind of uh it looked at the changes that were related. So there were changes to the plans physically that affected the plans. But those changes were sort of in the minor category of changes to the plat plans. But maybe not considered minor to the application, given that they were made to the actual plat plans, right? These were beyond correcting the note. This was things where we had topography wrong, not shown. Uh we had a a pond that its bottom needed to be dropped a little bit in order to uh. As an issue, some drainage calculations that need modified um.
Things that they paid somebody else to.
Things that 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 the right, that the surveyor or the engineer had to actually make changes to the sheets. Um that that impacted the final uh. Before we could do final approval, they were fairly minor on the scope of things. But um I I'm not comfortable making judgments in those cases. Uh on whether or not those are considered minor because it's a razor's edge. Three changes, six, five, or three, someone makes four, and I'm gonna insert myself between change three and change four um. Those those are the areas where I'm a little less comfortable defining what is minor. I have a couple of possibilities. I've been over and around this. Uh Brendan and I kind of went over around this and brainstormed on this. Um if if we have some remaining issues after the third review um that we've done. Normally, what what would be called for is if another submittal has to be submitted, a fee would have to be submitted with it. That fee is fairly substantial. It's twenty-five percent of the original fee um that that. That review, that fee has to be paid, okay? If it's gonna be a change to plans and plat to bring them in standards that doesn't fall under one of the two categories I already described. So as a potential. I understand that some of these changes are minor. They don't take a lot of review time on our side. They do take some review time on our side, but they're not as. They're not as bad as a full plan review. They're sort of in the minor category. The only way I could think uh uh to limit. Sort of the scope of changes that could be allowed under a fourth review without a fee. Was to limit the amount of time that the applicant had to respond to the letter um to our final review letter. And by limiting their response time, it does a couple of things. And A ensures that that those changes to the plans are not. Major because they don't have a lot of time to make those changes. So they would have to be fairly minor in order for them to be able to dress them up and get them back to us uh timely. And two is it keeps our review staff. Uh fresh on the plan set. So when we get them back, we're not getting them back. Sixty days later and trying to remember each and every item on the plan set. Refresh our memories on on what the issues were and going through all that, installing the process out for them. So. Uh that's what's sort of addressed under three A. I'm not saying that court needs to do this and I put five business days in there. I'm not even saying that that needs to be the actual business days. But it's the only way I could think to restrict it further. If I can tell you right now, if I'm left to my own, just trying to decide between a plan set. And one of them is lowering a pond bottom, one of them is moving some topos all around on the ditch and recalculating the drainage. Need to decipher which one of those are minor. I would say they're all changes to the plans and I'm gonna send them. I'm gonna tell them to pay the fee. Uh unless the court provides me this additional leeway. Uh they could then advocate to court, look, we only made five changes to the plans. Can you can you let this one go? That would be an avocation directly to court. I'm not gonna prove those under minor changes. Unless there's more definition given to me for what I can consider a minor change. Where I'm at right now is number one and number two. I could look at those. Is our judgment in our office to decide those are minor changes, right? If somebody is exceeding one of those two, I'll tell them no. But as long as they're within the bounds of one and two, I'll tell them yes. If the court wishes to add number three, right, and and add additional leeway for changes to the plans. Uh this is my best suggestion on how to do that. Uh if the court doesn't wish to do that. Now, some of the ones I have now may not meet these guidelines perfectly. But I will say I've got a couple on coming up on agenda today and another one in the in the in the uh wings. Where they uh have needed some cleanup. In order to get their final plan and plaits after the third review or even in case after the fourth review. To get their final plan and plaits into a no objection uh. State where we can apply no objection from our reviews reviews. So that's where we're at um. Uh the the I can handle the ones that we have that have been submitted past third review now. On sort of applying the same standard. Obviously, the five-day standard can't really be applied now because it's already been stuff that's turned into me. Um and I didn't give them that standard when they were looking at turn. Um but uh other than that, the only way I know to do is have the court consider project by project based on the changes they made after they. Review to get to.
My thoughts are. Your office needs to be black and white. It needs to be, yes, you can, yes, we can charge you, no, we're not gonna charge you. So one and two, that don't change the physical makeup of the of the the plans. You know, you smell Smith with a Y instead of an I or something like that. I don't have any issue with that. But. If it's move a line over this much, then somebody somewhere did some work and they wrote a check for that and paid that guy. You know, so um. If you stick to one and two, then we can become the bad guys up here. It's like, hey, it's minor. I have to charge you for it. You're welcome to go to court. And tell them what you did and and if it's up to them, they can make that decision. But your office needs to be black and white. It just needs to be, hey. Sorry, you know, you 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 got your two reviews or whatever. Now this is still wrong and now it's wrong after number three or four. I can't help you, but you're welcome to go to court. What y'all's thoughts?
I mean. He can already do one and two on the ground now. We've we've already said that.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna give him a reprieve, I think it needs to be pretty hard because, you know, the five days is a good deal. Um versus paying for that other review. Uh if that's an option the court wants to go with um. I I don't know. You you know, if if it's not hard, then they're gonna take it, use it.
Yeah.
You know, or take it for granted.
And this is that.
And and our deal is, is, you know, we're supposed to pay and um.
Yeah.
Like you said, you've had.
This is your third shot.
Yeah. And and so if you're gonna give them a fourth and and. He's gonna be pretty harsh, you know? If it's minor, no, if it's major stuff, you know, I don't, like you said, I don't know where you draw the line, moving some lines and yardages and, you know, but I mean.
I mean, that'd be my criteria. If it's if it's a word.
Yeah.
Change the word. If it's a line, you can't change the line without that counting as a review and you have to come.
Well, and and it goes back, we think of the developer paying for it, but it shouldn't be the developer. It shouldn't be the the ones that drew the plans at the beginning. You know, I I mean, I'm sure it all gets figured in, but you know, it's because you've had three shots at it. Somebody hadn't done what they were supposed to do.
I'm not trying to set limits on where the court can waive the fee, but I am trying to set a limit on where you guys want me to waive the fee.
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly how big of a fence you're letting me run around in. And number one and number two, I think those can be addressed pretty easily. I don't think that either any of those will be. Uh seen differently by the court than they go by me.
Yeah, but this position we put you in.
If we proceed beyond that and I start trying to judge whether one sheet redesign on a pond. Is worse than three sheets of changed ditch contour lines because the ditch didn't contain the hundred year event. And decide which one's minor, which one's major. That that becomes very apples, oranges, pineapples.
Puts you in a bad spot. And I don't I don't think we need to put you in that spot. They can come here and ask that because. Let's say it's a twenty-five hundred dollar fee. They're gonna come pay. Andy, it's day six, brother. Come on, man, it's day six. Twenty-five hundred dollars. Can't you get this in? That's that's a spot that could put you in. So if you say, hey, look. It's your third shot. You can change some spelling or some words, but if you move a single line. I gotta recharge you. And they know that upfront going in. And if you can't get it right after three times, you may have picked the wrong guy to draw it up or come up here.
Usually it's not twenty-five hundred, it's twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so I'm saying, so and so hate and. Yeah, so come up here and plead your case as to why I took you four shots to get that line right and take your shot up here, but. Your office needs to be in. One and two should be like stuck on the wall right up there when they walk in and read it, you know, hey. You don't get it right after three times, it's gonna cost you some money. You can take your hat in your hand at Commissioners Court. Where we can be fuzzy if we need to be, but you don't need to be fuzzy. You need to be black. That's my thoughts on it.
This was a a way to get where if it's still something very minor. They five days, you know, um that that give it the appearance that we're working with the development.
But they've had it. They're on their fourth trip. They've had seven months to get it right.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, and and I we I live by the philosophy that no good deeds goes unpunished. Just just with that little bit of, hey. Five days at twenty-five.
Going on. Are we still stopping the first review after we hit so many? Things wrong? We quit that. We get a full review.
Just reject it and say.
Okay.
Well, because I mean, they have a criteria. They know what we expect, you know?
It's bad if it if it's if it's if it's if it doesn't provide enough information for us to be able to do a fourth review, we'll just say we're not.
Okay.
And every time, you you know, even the minor stuff, it cost us money. It's costing Andy's department money. And every time, y- y- you know, even the minor stuff, it costs us money. It's costing Andy's department money. Absolutely, so.
I do have a question.
I don't need to order.
Jake, let's go to some Texas professional engineering. I, I just like clarification so I can also understand how to deal with projects moving forward. Um, so when. When there is, I think with, uh, Commissioner Doggett's suggestion, when there is, uh, you can grab. Four different engineers to try to do hydraulics and hydrology study, and they all will come with their own decision, right? And so my job is to satisfy your, the reviewing engineer, which in this case it could be Blile, could whoever, i- it might be. It might take, you know, two submittals where they also disagree with our approach or with our professional opinion of how. The drainage study needs to be, and it just takes coordination back and forth. So are those the scenarios where in, in this type of handling the, the. The situation, it gets presented and, and we evaluate, does it really trigger, because it was a minor revision to the drainage study to make sure that everybody's. Comfortable, uh, or coming to a same conclusion, uh, or I'm trying to understand what are those scenarios with.
But you still get, even on that situation, you still get three kisses at the pig to get that one right. So.
Two, right, because the third one needs to be.
Yeah, third one has to be just right. So that's your third kiss. You get one, didn't work. Number two, didn't work. Number three has to work. And if it doesn't, it's five days. Yeah, you know, are you going to take something that's been six months? Kick back and forth, and in five days come up with something that the world loves. So I, I just think that. Um, and like I said, it's just my opinion. If you put it in black and white and there's no gray area there, then there's no gray area. So you're like, we have to be right on this third attempt, guys. We, it may be like, hey, before I submit this. Blile, let me come visit with you. Let's talk about it before I turn it in.
They can do that.
Sure.
They can, I, I set those meetings up.
Well, and, and what we've got down the road here is a prime example. I, I mean, we've, we've got. The two engineers that we've got contracts with, you know, one reviewing, one built something, uh, the, the next one. And the other engineer reviewed it, and you know, they've got a pretty good list of, of stuff that they had to come up with, you know, to, and get, and get fixed, so. You know, uh, when you start going into four reviews, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty well with Bill. It ought to be fixed by them, you know? And, and if not, you're trying to push it too hard to, uh, get it done and not taking the time to, uh, converse with each other.
Well, I think the, the scenarios that I've come across so far, and this is just personally our experience, that there's projects that are not necessarily fitting in. The mold of what the subdivisions regulations were, were exactly written. There's special scenarios in some projects and in others, and, and those we try to. Talk with Andy and while ahead of time, but those are what typically also triggers, okay, well, this is what we. Believe will address the situation via variances that we need or so on. Um, but you know, the comments was another, the number of comments of when we get the. Rejection or a full review wasn't submitted. Uh, my understanding from last time I read, unless there was already a new rule put in place, I don't know what that number was besides just. When I met with, with, um, a team members from Blile, and they said they had a rule of thumb of so many comments, well. Of a hundred acre project, and let's just say fifty comments is, is the trigger, right? If I have a hundred acre development, or I have a fourteen hundred acre development, fifty comments is very different for both of them. So that's where I'm trying to understand, so I also make sure I set myself up for success and not otherwise.
And that is what I'm saying on the back end of that. If it's something that. He has to say no to, but you feel like you got an argument for it, then you get to come here.
Okay.
I mean, that's my thoughts. Come here and say that, hey, it's fourteen hundred and forty acres, and you know, they stopped after fifty.
Sure.
We fixed all those, and then we got the other fifty, and you know, we has a few more, so we, you know, we got to number three, but number four is going to be perfect.
We just said we're not, we're not stopping. We're doing full reviews.
Well.
That's what I asked.
Okay, alright, so now we're doing full set, that even eliminates it.
From this, from that, from not very long after that full.
Right.
Decision was made.
Okay.
We could not do a full detailed review because the plan set was not, did not include all the information we needed.
Yeah.
Just write it down, from the, from the guidance review, await a submittal till we could.
And tell them that one didn't count.
Yeah.
And not count that one.
Okay, so there's, so there's an option.
So there's no limit.
Okay. There's an option there, so, I mean, my position is, like I said, the very first thing, he shouldn't have to worry ethically. R- relationshipy, anything. It should be like.
Free show.
This is number three. You, you can go to court, but I'm, I'm bound by number one and number two. Go take your best shot with that.
There is a, there is a, also, there is a third option that's not on here because it's actually addressed in a separate section of the policy. If we miss something on review, and we bring it up, like, we didn't bring it up the first time, we didn't bring it up the second time, we was sitting there the whole time sleeping, and then we catch it.
And that's us.
That's on us.
Yeah.
That's our policy separately.
Yeah, and that's you coming saying, hey, we missed that. So it doesn't count.
Alright, so what, what do we need to get out of house? You need a number?
I need to know if I'm applying one and two, or one, or if you guys want to include provisions per.
My opinion, we do one and two and draw a big old fat black line.
Make a motion, Bill.
I make. Five, one and two.
Below fold.
To get that. I make the motion, we. Direct our planning and building director to use options one and two, that the additional guidance related to subdivision plating fees and additional.
I agree with you. And that, that covers the before, you know, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it just sets us.
I got a motion and a second all in favor, say aye. Raise your right hand, sorry.
Okay, I don't both.
Yeah. Motion carries. Number thirty-six, discuss and take action on request for acceptance of plans for plat application P number. Two zero two two dash zero three five Homestead Hills, JAD, John Sadler survey. Abstract four nine six and four nine seven, plan set by Kimberly Barbara Lill. Date twelve fifteen twenty twenty-three.
Stephanie, what is?
Yes, sir, I'm still with you.
So, um, on this item, it's actually the plans, based on commissioner's board's last section of comments. Tell you that there is a fee then still on this project. Uh, they could bring that back to court and ask for the fee based on individual circumstances. But if we, if we make the motion to approve, uh, we have no objection. We're out of no comments, correct, correct, Stephanie?
Right.
Yes, I'm right here.
Um, make the motion to approve the approved contingent on any final fees being paid, uh, prior to acceptance of the plat. That gives them the time.
And they don't come up court, right?
Yeah, they, they would come back to court specifically to ask for a waiver that.
Yeah, but if they pay the fee.
They pay it if you don't come out.
It's yours, isn't it, Brandon?
And he is, uh, just, yeah. Well, I make a motion to approve item thirty-six this percentage.
Second.
Second it off.
Yes.
I'll please be moved back to court for waiver.
That's still your second?
That's still in my second.
Uh, moving second, oh, raise your right hand here in favor. I think I got all that.
You all messed up, yeah.
I know. Thirty-one. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on request for preliminary approval of plat. For plat application fees at number two zero two two. Dash zero three five Homestead Hills, John Sadler survey abstract four nine six and four nine seven.
So, um, they, they have opted, the developer has opted to construct, then come back for final plat once construction. So you'll see on the agenda, it's preliminary approval of the plat, um, um. And so we just need it for to give preliminary approval, uh, of plat. The final approval will occur until after construction is complete. So I make a motion to approve item thirty-seven preliminary approval for the plat.
Second.
All favor is right hand. Motion carries. Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on waverly manners at High Meadow Development LLC request for variance of sections. Six point two and B four point one one. On the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding TexDOT and explore pipeline company permits and or letters of no obligation. For Platts number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero, the manager subdivision.
EJ, are you with us? Hello?
Anything, Alan?
Um. So. They've requested a variant. Um, they do not have, uh, have not submitted to us a final letter from TexDOT on the permit. Driveway, access to the backside driveway, nor have we received a final objection letter. Uh, permit from the, uh, gas pipeline company. Uh, those are two things we would normally require at our hands prior to approval of the plat plans. Uh, we do not have those. They're requesting a variance on submitting those later. Uh, after approval is confirmed for plat plans. Um, that's the variances before important enough. Um, Derek, did you want to add anything to that?
David, uh, I need you to question. David from the developer. Waverly manners, um, so we do have this preliminary approval from TexDOT. And excuse me, uh, Derek and Patrick can give more details with you too, but, um, we expect to have that letter any day. Um, we've already gone back and forth with some striping that they wanted, and Derek's and Patrick and Blile have worked all that out. Um, as well as the pipeline, we expect to have a letter of no objection any day, so. Um, we're right there. We've got verbal approvals from both of them. I don't think there's any issue with the actual files.
Court has a couple of options here. If they use to grant the variance, then. We can approve the plat, the plans, accept the bond with no contingency. You choose not to grant the variance, but you. Want to still take action today, you could take contingent action of all those letters being submitted. But for the purposes of this single item, it is a variance to not submit that prior to approval. So then there would be no contingencies on those items if we moved on, if we grant this variance.
So what about, what about construction? David, I mean, would y'all?
We'd like to start as soon as we can.
Alright, but we need these letters.
Well, okay, I.
We make it continue.
I mean, uh.
Three days, they can start.
Yeah, as far as textile.
That's what I knew.
And then we wouldn't have an issue working pipelines anyways for road construction in there because we won't be going. Well, with some very specific areas, but we have a lot of work to do around them.
So we, we added in the variance language, the application, we added, uh, three stipulations. One being we wouldn't do any construction in TexDOT right away or the pipeline right away, so we've got those approvals. One being, uh, we'll get within sixty days, requiring no other changes, obviously.
Doing with pipeline.
I followed American last week to there, but they, uh, Patrick did have a conversation with them about two weeks ago. They're, they're happy with everything. And I, I'm going to get into that a little bit more just to give you background information. Um, and then the third one was.
If you already have access, temporary access.
Right, we, we, we have, uh, access to establishes. We have an existing driveway that we can access the property through. Uh, for construction, so we don't need the, the entrances for TexDOT for that. Uh, we also, at the very beginning with the pipeline company, uh, we went out and staked depths of the pipeline. Uh, they probed it, we got the depths, uh, they gave us instruction about how to cross the pipeline, if we had to add fill to get the proper clearance, things like that. All that's been worked out, uh, already with the pipeline, so there's no danger of us doing anything out there. Uh, construction wise, that's going to interfere with pipeline or with TexDOT. Um, the reason we're in the situation we're in, um, this, this project's been challenging. There's, it's, it's constantly changing. Um, if you remember, we came for a variance a while back about having one drive or two drives. Um, so, you know, we, we ended up having to re-submit a TIA. Uh, when we started going, going to Tex, TexDOT, um, we had a little bit of a difference in opinion of how far. The, uh, lanes needed to be widened, how far the tapers needed to be, uh, they kind of kept coming back and saying we want a little more, one more. Or, uh, if you looked in the, the package, you could see the, the latest was, I think we had. Uh, forty feet, and they wanted a hundred feet more, and then, uh, they started telling us we needed to widen the, um, culvert structure. Well, we were only widening the lane by like a foot at the culvert structure, so that was the. We do actually have a final email from them saying, okay, you're right, you don't have to do that. So it's just been a back and forth with them that are on very minor. They're out in the right way, not even in front of the property, the, the location of the drives and the. Size of the drives and all that drainage, everything has been approved for some time, and so, um, it has no. Uh, uh, possibility of really affecting the plat or the plants. That's all been pretty standard. Same thing with the pipeline company back in November twenty-two. Uh, like I said, we staked everything, we got depth. They came back and they said, um, okay, everything was good, we're good to go. And then when we finally worked everything out with the county as far as how to work around the pipeline and, and the needs for easements and things like that. Resubmit to the pipeline company, and they say, well, we need depths of these new areas. Well, they were literally within ten feet of the original areas we got. And so we had to resubmit back out there again. We've done that. That was the conversation Mr. Patrick had, uh, about two weeks ago saying, yeah, the depth look good, everything's good. Got to go through the final paperwork. That's why I have no problem saying I'm confident we can get it in sixty days, so.
Yeah, Brandon.
No, I make the motion to approve number thirty-eight as presented with. Uh, contention upon getting the letter from TexDOT and pipeline getaway rate. So this is the variance. If you approve the variance, then you don't need contingencies. If you disapprove the variance, then you can add contingencies to all your other approvals. You approve the variance. Okay, as you waived the requirement.
Okay.
Still okay over?
Well. So you can, you can disapprove the variance, but you can still come back and approve the other items contingent upon this middle of the two letters. If, if that's what you want to do.
I mean, they, they can't function without doing it anyway, so, because you can't get on the state highway unless you get their approval.
That's ours.
And you can't, you can't cross the pipeline without their approval, so.
There's no way around it, it's not.
Y'all got to do it.
If the court approves the variance, then, then the other three approvals that are upcoming. The approval of the bond, the approval of the plat, the approval of the plans will not be subject to a contingency. The variance will be in place, and the conditions of the variance will be held against the variance, but the plat could be filed. The plans then are approved and could be moved forward on with the exceptions of what they put in the variant. If you, that were, don't grant the variance and put a contingency that the two letters are submitted. Our office would not allow the plat to be filed or allow construction to begin until we receive those two letters. So it's the court's option which thing they would rather have happen. So if they're wanting to get started on this, this project's been sitting there for what, a year now?
About a year, yes, sir.
So then we need to approve the very, approve the variances on number thirty-eight. That'd be my motion.
I'll say.
Moving second, all favor, raise your right hand. Most cash. Thirty-nine, discuss and take action on request for acceptance of plans for plat application. P number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, the manners Jose Maria de la Garza, abstract twenty-two, planned set by Patrick D. Strong, but. Thanks, Brandon.
This is the approval of the plans, uh, again, it would, uh. Based on court's previous action, press approval of plans, the only contingency would be on the fee being paid. At the current fee being paid or paid or waived. I'm like, uh, approve item number thirty-seven to accept the plans for plat application for the manners. It's all the fees.
Take it off on the current fee being paid or waived.
Yeah.
Moving second, did all favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number four, to discuss and take action on acceptance of performance bond for plat number. Plat application P number two zero two three dash zero one, the manners, Jose Maria de la Garza, abstract twenty-two.
So the bond, I think it was included, was a little bit off. It's, uh, this match is their original engineer's cost estimate and their updated engineer's cost estimate. It was one in the middle. Where it dropped about a hundred thousand dollars, so this one goes back up to.
Same motion.
And they have the original. So we have the original that's all, that's wrong, they have the wrong number. It's in A's, okay?
Yeah.
So they have the original today, an exchange would have to be made of the two, or accepts this one in this event, okay? Review this, this is all, and I would ask that the court make the, uh, acceptance subject to final legal review. Because Quinn has not seen this copy. He saw the previous copy, which should be identical, but he has not seen this copy.
Are they put right now? Right. They can make that motion, and then.
So I'm, I'm asking, you know, one that's within the city of New Waverly County in Walbert. So I'm, I'm asking, you know, when it's within the city of New Waverly County of Walker. Anyway, there's not anywhere close to that. Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the zip code city, but it's not the actual city. The ci- the city of New Waverly should probably be struck and just the county of Walker. I agree with you.
So pass it with a B on that, that's going with this.
Other than that.
Alright, make a motion to approve the spawn or accept a performance spawn struck and seeing in order to. Uh contingent upon original means, contingent upon the original.
I'll second that.
Moving second, all favor raised your right hand, motion carries. Forty-one, discuss and take action on approval, final plat for plat application P number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero, the Manners. Jose Marina de la Garza, track twenty-two.
Based on the previous effort for. The, the only, the only change that they've made to the plat was there was a couple of dub changes, they've already made those. Once a member, you'll see in the GLS.
Oh, yeah.
It's still early later.
Yeah.
Motion to approve item forty-one, contingent upon fees being paid or waived.
I'll second that.
Moving second, all favor raised your right hand, motion carries. Pretty true, but your hand was up, okay. Uh, no executive session, any public comments? Questions from media? Commission's court.
Lot of rain. Nice, we got it.